Channel seventeen, are you ready? Okay, then your, all your support staff are ready.
All right, let's do this. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Provo Municipal Council Work Session for Tuesday, July twenty first, two thousand and twenty. It is two oh one P M. And we are gathered online. Mr. Strachan, would you read the statement about meetings with electronic means?
Sure. This meeting will be conducted entirely by electronic means. On July sixth, two thousand and twenty, in accordance with Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven subsection four, the City Council Chair George Handley determined that conducting meetings of the municipal council with an anchor location, such as the municipal council chamber, presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which Mr. Handley has made this determination. Utah has been in a declared state of emergency due to Novell coronavirus disease two thousand and nineteen, otherwise known as COVID nineteen, since March sixth, two thousand and twenty. A disease outbreak that the World Health Organization has characterized as a pandemic. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or the C D C, state that COVID nineteen is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close, close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and it may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. Federal, state, and local authorities have recommended that individuals limit public gatherings, wear face masks, and follow social distancing guidelines, that individuals exposed to persons experiences, experiencing symptoms of COVID nineteen, self-quarantine for fourteen days, and that individuals experiencing symptoms of COVID nineteen self-isolate to prevent and control the continuing spread of COVID nineteen. Notwithstanding that Utah generally and Utah County specifically have been moved to the low-risk or yellow phase, reported COVID nineteen cases in Utah County have more than doubled since May thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the Provo City Municipal Council Chamber. Additionally, the Chair of the Governing Board of the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City has determined that its meetings are subject to the same risks and has adopted the same procedures as the municipal council. The meeting will be available to the public for live broadcast and on-demand viewing at youtube dot com slash Provo City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. This meeting is being broadcast live, maybe, on the web at the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. I'd like to remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking so as to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. You should note that our Chair, George Handley, is not available this afternoon, so you will have to put up with me. And with that, we will do a roll call with me reading off the names of the councilors present, which include Counselor Dave Shipley, Counselor Dave Sewell, Counselor Travis Hoben, Counselor Shannon Ellsworth, and Counselor Bill Fillmore and myself, David Harding, and with George Handley excused. We will begin with an opening prayer provided by Cliff Strachan.
Father, amen. We thank thee this day for the opportunity to meet as a municipal council, to discuss issues that are pertinent to the community, and for the council to weigh and, and weigh in and ask questions of city staff and others who have issues before the council, that they may make wise and deliberate decisions. We pray, Father, for our community and ask for thy protection against disease and other issues that we face on a day-to-day basis. And we ask, Father, for thy wisdom be upon us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Strachan. It is proposed that we approve the minutes from the April seventh budget retreat, April seventh, two thousand and twenty budget retreat. I trust that everyone has had the opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any changes that we would like to see? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving these minutes? Seeing none, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. And just want to take the opportunity to, to thank Ms. Vanderworkin for her very professional, very capable work in preparing those minutes. Although this is a public meeting, only presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions, unless otherwise invited by the Chair. Use the raised hand feature in the Zoom meeting to indicate that you would like to speak, and please wait until called upon by the Chair. Our first item of business is a discussion regarding a water smart grant application. This will be presented by Mr. Dave Decker, our Public Works Director, and has been budgeted for thirty minutes. And so we'll turn the time over to Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Harding, and I appreciate the time to visit with the council and provide an update on the aquifer storage and recovery project, and also talk briefly about a grant that we are applying for that requires a resolution from the council that will be on the first meeting in August. We're going to start the presentation. I don't know if Hannah can bring that up, or one of the other council staff members, or if we can do that. Thank you. Just before we get too far into this presentation and provide an update to the council on aquifer storage and recovery, I want to do a couple of quick introductions and recognize some staff and consultants that are putting in a substantial amount of time. We have bar engineering that is the consultant on this, and I believe Jeff Davis is on the, the call of this today, representing bar engineering. They're, they're doing a very good job and have made substantial progress to what we're calling Phase One and Phase Two. I also want to recognize Gary Calder and Shane, Shane Jones. They're in the room here with me. I don't know if you can see them. But they, they are doing just a fantastic job on, on this project. Ryan York is also with me in the room. He's been heavily involved in, in a couple of the projects. As we, as we go through some detail, I'll spell, spell out some of the, the work that his staff, excuse me, his staff has been doing. And also Jimmy McKnight is here with me. Just really quickly, I want, I want the council to, I think I've, I've told the council this before about ASR. And again, that stands for aquifer storage and recovery. This project, I think, is, is largely kind of flying under the radar, if, if I can say it that way. It's, it's a project that despite the, the lack of maybe conversation and public view on ASR, I've, I've told a number of people that it is probably the most significant project that is going on right now in public works. And, and, and when you consider that statement relative to some of the other projects that are going on in public works, I, I think it helps you to understand how I feel about ASR. It's, it's a lot like a savings account, but instead of saving money, you're saving water over years. And, and, and again, much like the financial world, saving takes a consistent effort every single month, putting money away, and as long as Provo State is serious about ASR, and we continue to be consistent with it, eventually that, that saving of the water will turn into something very significant, you know, very much like a gold mine after years and years of, of saving. And, and drinking water obviously is very significant to, to any municipality. Just as a reminder, right now, Provo City is getting about half or about fifteen thousand acre feet of its water from groundwater sources. And I think, I'm hoping that the council can remember that we're seeing a decline, about an average of twenty feet of decline in the groundwater levels in all of our wells. Some of them are up to seventy feet of decline, and we're just probably not on a sustainable course. As the, as the city grows, as potential water sources change, there is a pretty good reason to be concerned about drinking water sources in the future. And I think it's the appropriate time to, to prepare for that and to be looking forward to the future and making sure that we have a sustainable water source. The council may remember, I, I'm hoping that the council remembers, we have gone through a process of selecting a large number of potential ASR projects. There were somewhere in the range of twenty-five projects that we went through with bar engineering and ranked the projects as far as the likelihood of success with, with ASR. And there were several categories that we looked at and eventually pared the project list down to five. And we approached the state of Utah, a number of different agencies that we had to approach to get approval for pilot projects. So they were basically trial projects for ASR, short-term ASR projects. And we did get approval from the state to do five, five projects. Two of them include existing wells near the north end of the city. And there's a very tight time constraint when, when we can use those wells as ASR projects. And we have not moved forward just because of the, the time constraints. The winter time is the best time for the wells to be utilized as ASR. But we're making substantial progress on three other sites. In fact, two specifically that we're going to review today that use techniques for spreading water out on the surface and allowing it to dissipate into the ground. So if we can go to the next slide. So that, that, one of the projects that, that we've spent a substantial amount of time is in the Rock Canyon area. I'm hoping that everybody recognizes this area, this map that's up. And we've done a number of, of studies, and we're looking at, at the potential to do ASR. And what we approached, or how we approached this pilot project, was to drill four monitoring wells. And you can, you can see the monitoring well locations that are identified in yellow on the, on the, on the sheet. Can you see that highlighter?
I see the yellow numbers.
Okay, there's a highlighter that we're trying to use, but it doesn't sound like it's, it's working. Can you see the cursor moving?
Just a reminder, you have control of the cursor on your end.
Yeah, we're moving it. Just wondering if you can see the movement.
I don't see the movement.
No.
Okay, okay.
Oh, is it, is it the crosshairs?
No, no, it's, it's, it doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like you can see the, the cursor. So I'll describe the project still. It, it, it'll work okay. But we've identified four monitoring wells, and the monitoring wells vary in depth, anywhere from about forty to sixty feet, and they go as deep as five hundred feet. Well number two, which is down near the Rock Canyon debris basin on the upper left-hand corner, that's the deepest well. And the reasons, the reason that the, the wells were put in place is so that we can, we can monitor the effect of water being put on the surface and dissipating into the ground in the natural channel, and see if we can impact the natural groundwater levels underneath the surface. And so those wells are drilled at least to the point where we hit natural groundwater. So in some cases, we found natural groundwater fairly shallow, you know, as you would anticipate. Well number one is, is probably the shallowest at about two hundred feet. I guess well number four is actually a bit shallower at one forty-six. But groundwater was found generally about, I believe it was about two hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet in most cases below the surface. So after the monitoring wells were installed, and we're going to go to the next slide and then come back. So let's see if Jimmy can do the next slide. So this is a picture of the monitoring wells. This, this particular picture happens to be in River View Park, which we'll talk about in a minute here. But when the monitoring wells are completed, the well, and it's the center location in this picture, the other, the other steel is there just to protect the monitoring wells from getting hit. But that's the, the end result is, is about a six-inch round pipe that allows monitoring equipment to be put down into it so that we can, we can see if the groundwater is changing. So the next graph that we can go to, excuse me, the next picture shows how we got water into the natural channel. And so if you look carefully at this picture, it's a pipe that is used as an overflow to a tank. We have an existing tank, a culinary water tank, that's near the mouth of Rock Canyon. And it has an overflow that currently goes into the channel, the natural channel there. We also had Ryan and his staff add some pipe that ran this overflow a little bit higher in the canyon so that we were using more of the channel to try to dissipate more water into the ground. And so we ran this test for about two weeks, and we'll go to the next slide here. And, and, and I know this is a little bit of a technical graph here, so I'm, I'm going to try to quickly explain what's going on. Along the top are dates when the, when the pilot project was run. So you can see in early April, we started putting water into the ground in two different locations, indicated in either the green or the gray on the bottom left-hand corner. The water table elevation is shown on the upper line, the red line that's near the top of the graph. And you can see when we started in early April, at this particular monitoring well, which was well number three, the groundwater was about two hundred feet below the surface. And as we started putting water into the natural channel and dissipating into the ground, you can see that we influenced the groundwater fairly rapidly, and in fact, pretty significantly. We raised it about sixty or seventy feet in this particular well, just by putting in about two thousand gallons a minute. We were putting in about four and a half C F S, which is about two thousand gallons a minute at the, at the maximum. And we influenced the groundwater quite quickly. We noticed groundwater changes in all four monitoring wells. Well number two, if you remember, well number two is the deepest one near the debris basin in Rock Canyon and in the park. And that one, because it's the furthest one to the west, saw the slowest response to the groundwater that we were putting in, in the natural stream, but it did respond. And we did not run the test long enough to see it actually influence any of the wells. And you'll see a map in just a second where those wells are located. But in a fairly short period of time, just about two weeks of, of a pilot test, we influenced the, the groundwater pretty quickly and pretty substantially. Now, you may be asking, well, why did you only go for two weeks and then, and then turn off the pilot program? And the reason that we did that was we were anticipating a spring runoff and did not want to have the groundwater influenced by our pilot during spring runoff. And so we turned it off with the idea that we would let the natural groundwater rebound to its typical spot before spring runoff. Unfortunately, we did not have a spring runoff, at least at Rock Canyon this year. And so we were not able to see how a typical spring runoff would influence the groundwater, which was unfortunate. We were actually planning, as part of our pilot, to see that event, but unfortunately, it did not happen. The next slide shows a little bit bigger zoomed-out picture of, of Provo with Rock Canyon on the right-hand side of the picture. And, and the, the existing wells, the culinary drinking wells that are in the near proximity of Rock Canyon are highlighted in blue with a yellow ring around them. There's five or six different wells right there. And as you can see, if we can, long-term, if we can impact the aquifer and add water into the aquifer, it will travel naturally through the aquifer to the west downhill and travel toward these wells where they can, where that water can be recovered. And it may take, in, in some cases, it may take several months, the closest wells. And in many cases, it could take even years to get further down into the valley for recovery. But it's clearly protected. It's in the aquifer and, and does not evaporate. While, while we're on this slide, I want to do an introduction to the project, which is part of Phase Three, and, and really the second reason that we're in front of the council today doing this presentation. So long-term, in Rock Canyon, we do not want to use the culinary water system and put drinking water into the, into the aquifer. Long-term, the goal is to take water and water rights that are not being fully utilized right now out of the Provo River and put them in locations where it can dissipate into the ground and then, again, travel through the aquifer for months, sometimes years, essentially following the same path that natural spring runoff does in, in, in the Rock Canyon area. But we can do it on a more consistent basis. Instead of just having a spring runoff in May or in June each year, and then having it run dry for the other ten months of the year, we could potentially be running this all twelve months of the year. And, and the primary goal, or the primary projects that's been identified right now is, is, is highlighted on this map in brown. So you can see on the left-hand side, about the middle of the, of the map, there is a Provo River pump station identified, and then a brown line that identifies a, a water line, a twenty-four-inch water line that will go up twenty-two, thirty north, follow the path that's identified. I think it's twenty-three, twenty north that it deviates onto. Then there's a second pump station near the temp canal that's identified that will pump it a second time, pump the water, and pump it up to the mouth of Rock Canyon. If you've walked that area, you can, you probably know there's a small chlorination station at the mouth of the canyon. That's about the, the, the maximum height that we would pump the water to dissipate back into the natural channel and potentially into other locations in, in the mouth of Rock Canyon to allow it to dissipate into the ground. These pump stations would be designed to pump somewhere in the neighborhood of about nine thousand gallons a minute. That's about twenty C F S up to Rock Canyon area, and, and try to dissipate that amount of water into the ground so that we can substantially improve the aquifer in, in the location where we can withdraw it. The total project cost that's identified with the two pump stations and the twenty-four-inch water line on this map, it's about eighteen million dollars. And city staff, along with bar engineering, we have been applying for a number of grants. We have two into the state of Utah right now. We have two into the state of Utah right now to division of drinking water and what's the other one Shane? Water resources. So, and, and those have just recently, probably within the last month or month and a half, those two applications have been put in. We were informed about another grant through the Bureau of Reclamation called Water Smart Grant. And as we finish the presentation, you'll see a resolution that's required for this grant application. They asked the, the city council to, to provide a, a resolution to us. So before we go into much more detail, I just want to give you a little bit more information on ASR overall. So the next slide is of Riverview Park. This is up near about forty-five hundred north, right adjacent west of the Provo River. And we identified, along with bar, we identified this as a very likely site for significant success for ASR. And there is a, there's a, a manmade channel that kind of is identified in the middle of the, the park. Two of the monitoring wells, again, we've, we've identified four monitoring wells that were drilled in the park. They're identified with the yellow dots and they vary in depth. The groundwater is about a hundred, excuse me, two hundred and ten feet in this, in this location. And, and it's, again, we've talked about this. This is a very interesting site with the river right next to the park. Most people would anticipate groundwater being very shallow in this area, but the river seems to have perched itself and allowed a large amount of area underneath the river and underneath the park and adjoining properties in this area that could potentially be filled with water. And, and, and it has not influenced directly, at least by the, by the river. In this particular location, we pump water out of the Provo River. So you can see a blue dot on the right hand side, right next to the, the Provo River. And you'll see a picture of the pump in just a second. We pump water at about twenty-five hundred gallons a minute out of the, out of the river. It goes through a pipe, an underground pipe until it is, enters the manmade channel where there's an eye or an inlet identified on the north end of that channel and then flows through the channel. So if we can go through the next slide. This is a picture of the pump in the river, right next to the river where we're taking the water out of the river and utilizing water rights that are not fully being utilized. The next picture shows the manmade channel through the park. We have had to rebuild this channel. Ryan's, Ryan York's staff has done a fantastic job in having to clean the channel out. When, when it was originally built with the park, they could not keep water in the channel. And so they decided, they wanted a water feature at the time. And they decided to line the channel with clay and also some manmade fabrics. And of course, for ASR, we did not want the channel lined. So we had to remove all those items or all that, that manmade material. So Ryan's group has, has been doing that. The next slide, you can see the results. And, and by the way, when we turn the pump on, this manmade channel, most of the water disappears in about two hundred feet, the first two hundred feet of the channel, which is very rapid. And again, along the top of the, of this plot, you can see the results. The, the groundwater is shown on the darker line near the bottom of the, of the, of the graph. And in this particular case, we did not see a lot of influence in the groundwater, but we probably did not run the test long enough. We also have four very significant wells running in the area, drawing anywhere between four to two thousand gallons a minute. And so we may have just been maintaining the groundwater elevations. But we have the, as part of the pilot project right now, we have that project, the, the pump turned off. So we can see what the, the wells are going to do as far as influencing the groundwater in this area. So back to the, let's go to the next slide. Back to the main point or one of the main points in the, in the, in this presentation. Let's go to the next one, Jimmy.
Mr. Decker, let me just mention, we've got about five minutes left on this item. What are, is there a, a specific request of the council, an outcome that we're looking for with this presentation?
Yep, I have, I have one slide left after this one and it's the resolution. So the specific request that, that I was getting to, the Water Smart Grant requires a resolution from the council that indicates that we, that, that you as the elected officials, you recognize that there, that the application going to the Bureau of Reclamation is approved by the council. So the Water Smart Grant provides a fifty-fifty cost share up to one point five million. So that's the maximum amount that the city would get. The resolution, which is the last slide, will be in the August fourth meeting. This is the resolution. There's one other page that just has the signature on it. But you can see the, the, the bullet points of this essentially say that the elected officials are aware that the, that the application is being submitted and that it's authorized and supported and that the, and, and that the, the agency, the city is able to provide the funding specified in the application. So the, the, the quick answer to your, to your question is that, that really is what will be on the August fourth meeting and what's needed. So at this point, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions either on the resolution or on the ASR project overall.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Yeah, I'm curious, what makes a project competitive or an applicant competitive in this process? What is the Bureau of Reclamation looking for? What are they most likely to approve?
Well, the, the information that we've been provided on this particular grant is any, any project that is drought resistant. So a project that helps a city, you know, either survive or better combat the potential negative effects of a drought. And so we've, we feel like it's probably, you know, very applicable to their grant application.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Fillmore. And it looks like you're muted.
Okay, here we go again. David, first, just commendations to you and your team. This is an excellent piece of work. What, what is the long term plan here? We see what you're doing immediately. How do you see this playing out over the next ten, twenty, thirty years?
So the long term plan for the Rock Canyon areas is the project that we've identified, the two pump stations and the water line that goes from the Provo River up to the mouth of the canyon. Once that's in place, that could operate year round and for a long extended period of time. That's the long term plan in the Rock Canyon area. For ASR long term, we are, we're looking at other locations. Riverview Park is obviously one of them. Given the proximity of the Provo River and some other irrigation canals, we're able to get water into the Rock Canyon, or excuse me, the Riverview Park area without significant CIP costs. So that is, that is the long term plan for Riverview. But there are other locations already identified in the city that also have potential ASR value to the city and they will eventually make their way into the CIP list for public works to improve.
Okay, what, what is the long term plan for additional wells? Not monitoring wells, but water wells.
So, so right now in the CIP budget, I, I don't know if you recall the, the budget that was just passed. We've requested just a bit over a million dollars every single year for wells, either replacing existing wells or drilling new wells. Interestingly enough, right now that money pays for about one well every two years. So right now that's the plan and we're aggressively going after several wells. We have a well that's being drilled right now in the Grandview area. And it will be finished probably sometime next year, late, either late next year or the following spring.
How many wells do we have in operation right now, David?
Sixteen right now.
And are they all, they all pulling water from the same aquifer or multiple aquifers?
Well, they, they, they pull from different aquifers, but it's clear as, as we look at aquifer and, and how they intertwine, it's pretty clear that they are connected in some way. We have tried to get into aquifers that we have not been utilizing in the past. We drilled one well much deeper than had been anticipated in the city and found that the water was not usable in that particular location. So our, our well and the water that's available in these aqua, aquifers seem to be confined in most locations somewhere in the two hundred to seven hundred feet below the surface. Most of our wells do not exceed more than seven hundred feet to ground.
So is it, is it fair to say that we, we don't know precisely the potential water sources we have in the aquifers we're dealing with? It is, we're still kind of exploring and we may have access to more water capacity in the future than we now know?
There might be, but, but given, given our experience with one of the wells where we tried to drill into aquifers that had not been tapped previously, it did not turn out very well for the city. And the likelihood of being able to find water deeper in Provo, it, there's a likelihood. There's a possibility, but I would say it's a low possibility right now.
So we are now over time. This is a really, really good discussion, but we might need to continue it offline for some of the more technical details. Is there any burning questions before we leave this item? All right. Thank you, Mr. Decker, and all of your assistance there. We appreciate a very professional presentation. Thank you for all your comments. Sorry, Ms. Ms. Ellsworth.
I was just wondering if we could get a copy of the resolution. Was that in the packet? I don't remember.
I didn't, I did not see it in this packet. I imagine we would get it in the next packet, but.
It'll be in the next one.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to the next item. We had a, we started a little later in the afternoon, so we're really trying to pack these in. The next, this next item is budgeted for a full two minutes. It is a motion to add an additional committee member to the public gatherings committee. And this will be introduced by Mr. Cliff Strachan.
Council, on July seventh, you established the public gatherings meeting to, meeting to, or committee to look at the policies around public gatherings and protests, et cetera. And since then, Councilor Shannon Ellsworth has expressed an interest in being part of that committee. And by our council rules in the council handbook, she would need to be appointed to that annual committee by motion.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell. Any discussion on the motion? See none, I will call for a vote. I'll call your name and please give a verbal response. Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, and it passes unanimously with Mr. Handley, excused. We'll move on to item number three, an update regarding publicity policies for COVID-19. This is budgeted for thirty minutes, but if we can keep it to twenty-five, we can make up for some lost time. And if necessary, this was a late add, and if necessary, we can bring this back in two weeks to discuss it more. This will be introduced by Kilser David Sewell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, as we read the, the news, things haven't been going real well regarding the pandemic. We've recently read about new records of, of new cases, numbers of new cases being set in Utah and throughout the country and globally. Back when we were in the red phase, a couple of months ago, and we're transitioning to orange, we were seeing about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty new cases a week in Utah. And we're, last few weeks, we've been seeing over four times that number. We have a lot of great citizens who are doing their best to follow the recommended guidelines, but we keep seeing too many cases of, of situations where guidelines are not being observed. And, and that puts the health of everyone involved at risk in this situation. Probably one of the simplest things we can do is, is to wear masks when we're out in public, interacting with others. And we know, I, I enjoyed reading the mayor's post earlier. It's, it's become kind of political and that's really, really unfortunate. When really it should be more like, you know, we have speed limits to, that curtail our, our freedom a little bit, but they also protect the health and safety of others. We have, we have laws concerning food quality and things like that designed to protect, protect others. And so I guess I just wanted to kind of evaluate where we're at and look at whatever options we might have as a city. I mean, this, this problem is being dealt with at many levels, but the only, as, as government leaders, the only level that we can really influence is at the city level. Or at least have direct control over anyway. I'm feeling like we need to do more. Just wondering, just wanted to bring this up for discussion. I know it's a controversial topic and I've, I've shied away from supporting stronger action or mandates in the past, but I'm wondering if we're getting to the point where something like, like that might be needed. So that's kind of the introduction. What is, what are everyone's thoughts?
Mr. Sewell, would, would, would it be helpful to ask the administration for their thoughts or their?
Yes, absolutely.
Let's do that.
Yeah. Oh, and maybe one more thing by way of preface. I mean, since in our form of government, we have two branches. There's, for some problems, there's legislative and executive solutions. But I think legislative solutions tend to come very slowly. And so I don't feel like we have a lot of time here. So I would be very interested in the administration's perspective on this because if there was ever a situation where strong executive action is needed, I think we're in that situation at this point.
Okay, I can go first, Councilmember Sewell, if you want me to. Would that be all right?
Sure.
We've, I'll just give you a little background of how this has been probably the number one topic in our office for weeks now, actually the pandemic since. Actually, I was reading in my journal last night, March seventeenth is when it became the hot topic. And it is a big issue and it's, it's so overwhelming actually as I. And it is a big issue and it's it's so overwhelming, actually, as I think about how to manage this, that I keep leaning towards where I've stood from the beginning, and that is following the direction of the county and the state. I, like I stated, it's been so pressing on my mind that the blog this morning was part of that response, reaching out to the to Ralph Clegg at the county. I was on the phone with him for quite some time yesterday and it's it's good for me to talk to someone that can talk me through the process because it's confusing. It's a lot of information coming out right now and it's a moving target. I have a niece that works at the University of Utah Hospital and she was I was talking to her last night and she talked about how that's what science is. It's evolving, science evolves and you make changes and and you go with it. Something like I said, we've talked about it every day in the office for weeks and weeks now. It is significant. Mr. Clegg said that we are seeing an uptick since Memorial Day and we will see an uptick again when the kids go back to school, most likely. He he stated and he said, we probably will see another uptick when we all go back to church on a on a bigger basis. For him, he stated that's expected. For us, it's scary. It scares when we see numbers and the numbers can be frightening. There's education, though, that I think is the biggest piece that is something we can do as the administrative side of this is we can keep educating people. I don't know who had a chance to read the post I did this morning, but it talked about it has some Q and A about some of the most common, and I'm sure you've been getting the emails as well. They're in the hundreds at this point. And it it I mean, it's similar to our protest issue, it's similar to our brew pub issue for just as many people saying mandate this. I have the equal amount saying, don't mandate this. It's and sadly, it's it is that way, something I have done. And I and I asked Wayne as we were prepping for how best to even articulate our feelings on this as the mayor and as the administration and I'm writing this blog post today. I asked him to do a little research. So Wayne, would you be comfortable sharing what we kind of went over this morning?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So John or Hannah, if you can bring up the PowerPoint I sent you just a little bit ago. Try to the the mayor asked if I would take the data from the county and try to put it in an understandable format about what's been happening and with with the with the data in place. So let me if we can go to the next page, I'm I don't think I have control, Hannah, so that's fine. So case counts again. Okay, perfect. So the mayor asked if I would look at the January case counts, sorry, January, July case counts, shows how fast this year is going by. The July case counts at the state, county and and federal level. And then to bring them into some context. And so so this first slide shows the current cases during from the duration of the pandemic. And as you can see, the state of Utah has about 34,000, a little over 35,000, right at that mark, I think, today. This is yesterday's numbers, which constitutes about 1.07% of the state's population that has had a positive test. Now, again, positive tests are a little bit difficult because a person can have multiple positive tests and they will be counted multiple times. So it's not individuals who've had a test. So so the percent of population is is a bit of a challenging number, but it does at least give some level of context. Utah County is just a little under 1% in terms of the population that's that the number of cases compared to population. And then the United States is at 1.14%, so a little bit higher than that. As we, let's see, oops, went too fast. Mortality rates, another interesting one. This is one where Utah has doing fairly well compared to the rest of the country. So so of all the positive cases that have been counted and tested, test results come in, about 0.7% of those have resulted in a fatality. In Utah County, that's less than one half of 1%. And nationally, it's 3.7%. And so so we're substantially beating the national average in terms of cases that result in a fatality. The hospitalization rate, we've tried to take a look at persons who have been hospitalized as a percentage of positive cases. And again, it's not a pure correlation because people who are hospitalized might have multiple positive results, which each of which will count as one. But about 6% of the positive cases have resulted in hospitalization in the state and just under 5% at the county level. Hospital bed rate, this is one we hear about frequently. What's the status of our of our hospital beds? And so total COVID patients in intensive care unit beds today in Utah are 346 or yesterday. We have a total of 573 ICU beds in the state. So about 60% of those beds are currently taken up by COVID patients. Utah County, the number is slightly less than that as a percentage of of total beds. And then if we look at non-ICU beds, the numbers are all not all that much different. So again, 2,200 COVID patients in non-ICU beds today in the state with a total of 4,000 beds and and similar numbers in Utah County. So case counts, and again, this goes back to the first of July and takes a look at what's been happening with case counts. Today's numbers are actually in the 400 range again. And so had I had time to update after the case counts got released today, I would have. But this is the total case counts in Utah across the state as they have fluctuated over the the month of July. And Utah County, again, pretty similar curve, ups and downs. And and so again, but this this kind of indicates what's happening in Utah County from positive test results. The state has been looking, and you've probably heard the governor talk about the the Utah seven-day rolling average of positive cases. So this is kind of looking at if you equalize the last week of time and look at look at averages. So you take out the the peaks and valleys and and try to look at what's been happening on a seven-day rolling average. So we've been hovering in the 600 range. We took a bump up about to 700. And then the last few days, we've been starting to trend downward. And again, Utah County is pretty similar, although our decline in the recent days have been has been a little more steep than the state average has been. The governor's indication is that there won't be any change at all to the status of any counties until there is a consistently below 500 rolling case count, seven-day average rolling case count. So the other thing I wanted to just highlight was Dr. Dunn spoke recently about the recent spike where we had cases in the 700 to 900 range in Utah. Again, as Councilmember Sewell suggested, up dramatically from where we were a few months ago. And and some of that is is explained by some changes in testing protocols. So I just quoted Dr. Dunn here. So the day in which we hit our first record of over 700 cases, she indicated that antigen testing, which is a different form of testing than the PCR test, which is the one, the nasal swab that's been used recently or over the last several months. Antigen testing was not counted in results because the state did not have a high comfort level about the accuracy of the antigen test data. And now that they have, we're seeing antigen tests being reported as well. That's having a tendency to inflate tests as it compares with months prior. So there were tests being done, they were just not being reported. And again, 251 of those were reported in one day. And again, the PCR test is looking at viral RNA and antigen test looks at a protein that's a constituent part of the COVID-19 virus. The good news is that antigen tests come back a lot faster, usually within a day or so, than the traditional PCR tests. And then additional in addition to that, there were some cases that were diagnosed the first week in July that were delayed until the about the second week in July and some others that were diagnosed earlier in the week were added all at once. So again, the the testing protocols have changed and so the numbers have numbers have been significantly up. So with that, let me just add a comment or two about the mayor's commentary and then be happy to answer any questions you have. So I did have an opportunity to visit today with Cameron Deal with the League of Cities to explore what's been happening with mask mandate requests. You may know that during the third special legislative session this year, a bill passed which indicated that no political subdivision of the state or county health department can issue any restriction on resident behavior that is any more restrictive than what the governor issues without getting permission from the governor. And so one town in the state, the town of Springdale, which is located at the gateway to Zion National Park, was authorized to have a local mask mandate, and that's been put into place. And no other city or town has been given authorization to do that. Additionally, three counties, Summit Grand and Salt Lake County, have requested permission from the governor to issue mask mandates and those have been those have been granted. All three of those, Grand and Summit, largely because of high tourist traffic that that has a tendency to not respect boundaries. And Salt Lake County, because they've remained in the orange classification until till very recently, when now Salt Lake City is the last remaining orange city in Salt Lake County. So again, any effort that would be made by the city, should we decide to undertake a mask mandate, would have to be approved by by the governor's office specifically. So just to let you know kind of what the process would be there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or be happy to turn some time back to the mayor if she'd like.
Go ahead, Mr. Shipley.
Yeah, I just I just wonder in light of Orem's, not a mask mandate, but a a public facilities mask mandate that's consistent with what the state's done in in public facilities. I'd be supportive of something like that. I'd be supportive of anything we can do to to be an example and then to allow businesses to continue their good work that they've been doing, you know, to to require masks in many cases, but leave it up to businesses to do that. But what about the public facilities mandate?
So that's a great question, and I've been asked that a couple of times. And honestly, I wouldn't I would need to talk to my directors and talk to them and see what their thoughts. I wouldn't make a decision like that, a clean sweep, without hearing from them. A couple, when you compare Provo to Orem, it's kind of apples to oranges right now. Their rec center is closed for remodel, their library is on shortened hours, their city office, I'm sure you've driven by it on State Street, is under construction. So they're in a little bit of a different phase than Provo is. If you think about mandating something like that in the city of Provo, you need to take into consideration Peaks Ice Arena, our Provo Rec Center, our library, our golf course. It's it's it would be a big mandate. But with that said, I am happy to talk to the directors and get their feedback and and see maybe what that looks like. Again, I'm a huge opponent for self-regulating and encouraging the education piece. As we talk about this every day in our office and we listen to the governor and Dr. Dunn every day and and try and break down and make sense of what they're saying, it's a learning process every day. I learn something new every single day. But how do you get that out to the citizens? It's a trick. But the educational piece, I think, is going to be huge. The strongly encourage and top priority terms like that. We need to do some type of a campaign that pushes this out, that this is the least we can do. It's all about being considerate, kind, caring, responsible. I have Nicole working on it. She's actually working with Karen. They talked about it yesterday, some type of a campaign to roll out. But I'm open for other other feedback from other council members, too. So please keep giving me your feedback. Oh, I also wanted to add, I talked to Chief Ferguson, just got off the phone with him about an hour and a half ago on his thoughts on this. And he has some strong opinions. He said, this just opens up more questions than answers. How to enforce would be a question. He said he feels like if we were to do something like this, it would erode the trust of police. And how do you make someone wear a mask? You can't arrest your way out of problems. These are just some of the notes I took when I was talking to him. Anyways, just a couple ideas, but I'm open for more feedback from the council members.
Ms. Ellsworth, and then I'd like to make a comment.
I have a couple of concerns, and that makes a lot of sense why the city wouldn't create a mask mandate and that we do have to give permission from the governor. I'm not convinced that following the governor in the county right now is the is the best alternative that we have. The governor has different political constraints, and I think if he tried to create a statewide mandate or even just opened it up for any city to create a mandate, I think the legislature would come in and try and undercut him. And so I think they're dealing with some different political pressures. And then at the county, we've just seen recently that there's different levels of leadership and reliance on scientific method at the county. So I hope that Provo will be somewhat independent of those organizations where possible and use the evolving data to make the best decisions for Provo in this month, right? Because it's very much an evolving situation. But where the data has changed, I'm curious if Provo is making or the administration is creating different accommodations or different requirements based on how the data is changing. Because if our plan is sticking with what we created in March, certainly, we all know things have changed since March. So I'd be interested to see that kind of inflection or transition in in those policies. And then like Dave Shipley said, I would be supportive of employees or or requiring a public requiring masks in public facilities where possible. I frequent the both rec centers, the Ice Sheet and the rec center on Fifth North. And at one, the employees are really good at wearing masks. At the other one, the employees don't wear masks almost at all. So it seems like there's really some, yeah, some different levels of enforcement. And and I'd just like to see that improve, right? Let's get everyone on the same page and set a good example for our citizens. So those are some of my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Ellsworth. My thoughts, we've talked about it kind of broadly, but I I think it is it would be well to consider that we can act on on many different levels. You know, obviously, we've talked about a mandate and what our options are regarding that and state permission. And that's that's a fairly a fairly, it's on one end of the the spectrum of what we can do. And then we also, as a government organization, we have more say over what takes place at our facilities and what policies we have in place for our own employees. And then, you know, the the eight of us here are elected leaders for the community. And there's a lot that we can do from our our bully pulpit. We can do a lot of the encouragement that the mayor has has talked about. We talked about that, you know, that it's too bad that this has become political. But in in a way, I think that's kind of how our system of government works. We we have scientists, we have health experts that give us the data and that evolves and gives us give us the recommendations. And then as as elected officials, we need to decide what policies to enact and and what legislation to to enact. And so and that that is going to be, you know, a political process. And so I think we could have a good discussion on, you know, what if if we should be pushing the county or pushing the state or what what, you know, mandates or other things might look like. But regardless of how that's implemented, I think. But regardless of how that's implemented, I think it's medically, and the experts are very clear that wearing masks is the easiest, most effective thing that we can all be doing. And so I think if nothing else, we should be doing our best to encourage and inform the residents of Provo and our visitors that these are our steps that we can take. You know, and if we're concerned about shutdowns, if we're concerned about school reopening, if we're concerned about all of these things, the best thing for us to do is to all be wearing masks. And I do think that the scientific, the health data is very cut and dry on that. Now, even with that being cut and dry, you know, whether it's proper or best to create a mandate, that can be debated, and different people will have different opinions on that. And that's fine. I do think that the health recommendations and the health data is clear that masks work. And so I think we need to be considering, how can we encourage that? How can we inform better? And then what we should be doing with our own facilities? And then, if, you know, I guess further along on that discussion is, you know, should we be advocating to the county or state? But I think kind of in that order is what I would like to see us work on. Mr. Sewell.
I think Mr. Shipley's suggestion is a really good next step. It's a moderate step, and I see a lot of benefits from it. We're struggling with how to sort of convey this sense of urgency to our citizens regarding wearing masks. And if we say, well, at least in the facilities that we control, we're going to ask our employees and our, ask visitors to wear masks, that's a strong message, I think. The businesses who are starting to do this, I think, are very effective, and I think we should encourage them. I think we should give them some cover. Some businesses may be a little reluctant to require their customers to wear masks when the business next door isn't, and, you know, they don't want to drive people away that might prefer not to. But if we were to set the example and say, this is something we're willing to do, it's not convenient, but it's for the benefit of the health of our employees and the residents who come visit us, I think that could be really powerful.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore.
Just concur with the recommendation made by Mr. Shipley and Mr. Sewell. I think it's appropriate that the mayor move right away, talk to the directors, get that feedback. I agree with the mayor that it is, to some extent, apples and oranges thing, but we can make appropriate exceptions, right? We obviously don't need to wear a mask playing golf, I wouldn't think. But we can make appropriate exceptions, and I do think it's partially setting a good example, partially just being safe, being wise with respect to our stewardship, what we control.
Well, I think we could discuss some sort of motion, or we, if the administration, if you want to respond a bit to what we've said, or, you know, take it under advisement, another way forward is just that we feel that you've heard us, and we'll go back, as you expressed, talk to the department heads and decide what makes the most sense. Mr. Hoben.
Yeah, I'm wondering, how would it be enforced? So, you know, at a public facility, would somebody be sent home from work if they weren't willing to wear a mask? I don't know, I guess I just worry a little bit about that, and then also if there could be more effective means, such as lots of signage being put up. And, you know, I think the post by the mayor this morning was good. I personally have been wearing a mask in public places, you know, grocery store, restaurant, things like that, to be considerate of others. And also, maybe it might just help me stay a little bit more healthy, who knows? The research is mixed, but I think it's starting to lean towards the direction of it's good for everyone when you wear a mask, yourself included. I guess I just worry a little bit about the compulsion of it, you know, and enforcement, but maybe there's things we could learn from other municipalities, you know. I think citywide, it's going to be tough. I think I would probably echo some of the things of the, you know, like police chief, how do we enforce this right, and things like that. But I'm all pro-mask, don't get me wrong, just from a practical standpoint, you know, enforcement and things like that, how would we approach it?
All right, we have gone over on this item as well. Is there any burning desire to make another point before we leave this one? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 1.92 acres of real property, generally located at 442 and 490 South State Street, from general commercial to high-density residential, and authorizing a related development agreement. And I believe this will be presented by Mr. Dustin Wright, Provo City Planner. This has been budgeted for 10 minutes, and I believe it is on this evening's agenda as well.
All right, thank you.
Dustin, just so you know, you have control of the screen.
All right, thank you. So the property that we see here on Fifth South and State Street is a property the applicant has requested to rezone from the general commercial zone to the high-density residential zone. This rezone was actually gone through the process a year, a little over a year ago, and it was approved by the city council. And there was a development agreement that was attached to it, and the development agreement limited the height, the number of units, and things like that because of the HDR zone to keep it closer to what the MDR, or the medium-density residential zone, would allow. So that development agreement hadn't gotten signed yet because it had to go, some other things had to happen first. So the parcels needed to be combined through a plat, a bond needed to be posted on the property. And so as the applicant was working through those things, the time that it should have been signed within is one year, that didn't take place. And so through talking with the council attorney on this item, since that year had passed on the development agreement, it was recommended that this item be brought back to the council for approval. And so that's what the applicant is requesting at this time, is that the rezone that had been approved a year ago be approved again. Nothing has changed with the development that was being proposed. It's a 60-unit development here. I'll show you the site plan. So if you recall, there was the building on the State Street side that's going to be a four-story, and then the building on the north side of the development was lowered to be a three-story, and then two-story townhomes out on Fifth South here. And so that's essentially what the project was. Nothing has changed. The applicant is still proffering the same things that were in the original development agreement. And so we're just bringing this back through to get that rezone reaproved, so that they can move forward with the next steps in that process. Do you guys have any questions for me on that?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Go ahead, Mr. Sewell.
Would you say that the factors that caused the development agreement to lapse were outside of the developer's control?
So I think a few things. One, I don't think that they realized that there was that one-year expiration on it. The second is that, yeah, they were working on finding a contractor, so they were meeting with several contractors to find one that could build it within the timeframes that they were looking at. At the same time, they were trying to get that funding. So in Provo, before we move forward on a project like this and do a plat or something like that, where in this case, they would be combining a few parcels into one large parcel for the development, we require, engineering requires that a bond is posted on the property, and that bond, they were working through some of the financing with lenders at that time. So I think they ran into some of those type of hurdles that kind of prolonged them being able to move forward. And as staff and talking with some members in the council office to help prevent this in the future, we're kind of talking about some different measures that we can start implementing to make sure that, one, that the developers are well aware that there's that one-year limit, so that they have that knowledge. And the second would probably be to add some steps in our process so that we can follow up with them prior to that, you know, a few months in advance, we get a notification or something like that in our software system that says, this application development agreement will expire in the next couple of months, contact the applicant. So those are some things that we want to implement to make sure we don't run into this in the future.
Mr. Fillmore.
Just a couple of questions. I'm trying to get my head around this. What is the large facility to the right, to the east? What is that?
Across the street.
Across the street to the east, northeast.
Yeah, so those are, I forget the name of them, but they're other apartment complexes on State Street.
Okay.
It's Heritage Court and Monaco Court are the two buildings there.
Okay, so, and then as you go further south, are we looking there at commercial or light industrial? What is that on the east side?
Yeah, I don't recall what that one is.
There's a Provo assisted living and a community health connect, or it's coming up.
Okay. Does the, does the planning department or the planning commission have any preference for development in this area that is residential versus commercial versus light industrial?
Yeah, so when they began the process on this property, the general plan was commercial, and the zoning was the general commercial zone.
I know there is some concern that if you do this kind of medium-density residential, you're taking out an option for commercial development, which may or may not be of greater value to the neighborhood. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so it had been designated on the general plan as commercial, and the zoning is commercial. The city amended the general plan a couple of years ago to change this from commercial to residential with the rezone that was anticipated that we're reviewing today. So that's kind of the direction it's changed from commercial to look at it being residential.
I understand the application. I'm saying, is there a policy preference on the part of the planning department or planning commission?
Well, a couple of things on that. One is that both the staff and the planning commission basically follow whatever direction we're given from council, and the direction from council is usually given to us when we either amend a general plan or adopt a general plan. So with the neighborhood plan that's been adopted, we feel like this is appropriate. Just further to the south, there's a large commercial piece that we've been trying to encourage to develop commercially, and we've been hoping that these additional dwelling units that have been getting approved on South Street would help that to happen. That's why staff has made a map of those projects, and RDA and economic development staff have been meeting with commercial developers to try to help something happen there with further knowledge that there's more residential coming into the area.
I see. Well, that makes some sense. Thank you.
While there's no other hand up, let me just ask quickly, if I recall correctly, the staff and planning commission gave this a positive recommendation to the council a year ago. Is that still the case?
Yeah, I talked with Brian Jones, since they haven't changed anything, and it had been approved, it was the recommendation that we bring it back to the council to reaprove it, if that was the direction from the council.
Our feeling was that you already have a recommendation from the planning commission on this, and nothing has changed since they made their recommendation. So this is just a technical.
Let me clarify, just I wanted to confirm that staff has not changed, you have not changed your recommendation to the council. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, we feel like the project makes sense for this site.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Ellsworth next, and we probably should wrap up within three to five minutes.
I have some more information on this project and on the corridor and on the area that I can discuss in our meeting, in our later meeting. But just so that we all understand, this came to the planning commission two and a half years ago. Things have changed dramatically, I think. I voted yes on this two and a half years ago when I was a planning commissioner, and now with new information, I don't feel good about it. So I think we need to evaluate some of the patterns that we've created in the last, well, that have been created in the last few years before we endorse this.
What is the major change over the past two and a half years you're concerned about, and what information are you looking for?
Well, I have that information. I put it together in a PowerPoint just to kind of organize my thoughts. And so where we don't have time now, I intend to bring that up tonight. We can go through it now if people want to take the time.
With the items that we have scheduled for a closed session, probably would be best to wait until this evening. Okay, any last questions? Thank you, Mr. Wright, Mr. Pepperoni, and we'll discuss this further this evening. So the municipal council will now consider a motion to close the meeting. A closed session has been requested. I'll ask Mr. Jones to discuss this request.
There are two items I'm aware of that have been requested for a closed meeting. One has to do with...
There's three, I believe.
Okay. The two that I'm aware of have to do with reasonably imminent litigation and the sale of property. Somebody will have, oh...
The third is board and commission introductions.
Yeah, the third has to do with character and confidence of individuals for board and commission appointments. All three of those are appropriate reasons for closed sessions, so it would be appropriate for a motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone like to move to close the meeting?
I move that we close the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ellsworth, and a second.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Sewell, thank you. I believe we do need to go through the vote, so Mr. Hoben. Sorry, Councilor Hoben, will you say that again?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councilor Shipley?
Yes.
Councilor Sewell?
Yes.
Councilor Fillmore? Councilor Fillmore, are you with us? We will excuse him for now, and I will vote yes, and so that passes unanimously with Mr. Fillmore and Mr. Handley excused. And with that, we will now recess and reconvene in a closed meeting.